Good evening, everybody. My name is David Lyle and I welcome you to this League of Women Voters Columbia and Boone County Candidate Forum. It's my privilege to be involved again and the league is pleased to work with Columbia Public Library to welcome you to tonight's in-person and Zoom forum. We want to thank Lauren Williams and the Columbia Public Library for hosting this forum. Thanks to KFRU and KOPN for airing this forum on their radio stations. And the league wants you to know that they have prepared a voter guide for this election and it's available on their website. That website is LWVCBC. That stands for League of Women Voters Columbia Boone County.org. At this forum, you're going to hear from candidates for the contested races, Columbia School Board, Columbia City Council Ward Four, and the Columbia Mayor. So we request that you, as you participate tonight, understand that we do have people using this little speaker thing right in the middle there that are trying to listen remotely. And so respectfully, keep it as quiet as we possibly can through this forum so that everybody can hear what's going on and what the candidates have to say. The league also will have the timers up here in the front and they will be holding up signs, letting our candidates know as the countdown begins for them to wrap up their answers. We have note cards. Many people have already discovered these note cards and they've been to a league forum in the past. So they know what those are for. Write questions on that so that you can hand those up to a league member and they will provide them to me. I'll just say ahead of time, we'll get to as many as we can, but generally we don't get to every single one, but we'll try to do the best we can. And if you're listening to us through the Zoom feature, you can put a question in through the chat and a league member will monitor those and hand up those questions as they become available. So let's get to it. Our first segment is going to be from the candidates for the Columbia School Board. The school board has seven members. The Missouri School Board Association provides the following information on candidate qualifications and the role of the school board. I'd like to read those. The school, the Board of Education is a volunteer representative body elected by the registered voters of the local public school district. A candidate must be a US citizen, resident taxpayer of the district, a resident of Missouri for at least one year, and at least 24 years old. It must be current on state and local taxes and not be registered or required to register as a sex offender. The school board governs the school district and provides leadership and advocacy for public education. School boards are charged with making decisions in the best interest of the entire district. Specifically, the board has about five things that we'll note. Establishes the goal and vision of the district with input from the community and evaluates the results. Develops and approves rules to help schools operate for student success. Hires and evaluates the superintendent, approves the budget proposed by the superintendent and ensures funding supports district goals and shares district information with local legislators and with the community to secure resources necessary for student success. So there are three candidates. You see them if you're in the friends room here at the library in front. And there are two open positions. Each candidate is going to have a two-minute opening statement. Then the league has prepared a question which I will read. And for the second question, we're going to have the candidates answer questions from public high school students and they'll be introduced here in a moment. We will then have audience questions and a couple have already been handed up. Each candidate will have a minute to answer each question. Following the questions, each candidate will have time for a one-minute closing statement. The three candidates are presented in ballot order. They are Erica Dixon, Ken Rice, and Suzette Waters. April 8th is the election. Voters can choose two of these in the election. And if you vote early, you've got a chance to vote for two. So we're going to have opening statements now. And as I said, each one of these can last up to two minutes. Erica Dixon, it's good to see you tonight. Welcome and your opening statement, please.
All right. Thank you for having me in the space. Can you all hear me okay? Thank you for, thank you for having me in the space tonight. As he said, Erica Dixon here. I am not a product of Columbia Public Schools. I was born in Terre Haute, Indiana. Spent some time in Niagara Falls, did the bulk of my, my education in Jackson, Mississippi, and graduated high school in Boonville, Missouri. From Boonville, I went on to the University of Missouri. Transplantly, shortly after my freshman year, I had my first child and decided that Moberly Area Community College was a little bit more affordable for me. So went back there. Went on to Columbia College to obtain my Bachelor's of Arts in Sociology, I mean, I'm sorry, in Psychology with minors in Sociology and Education. I mean, got my Masters there as well. Went on and what I'm really excited to bring to the board's face if I'm able to obtain a seat is my experience in CPS, working within the system in various roles, starting as an Attendant Secretary. I served as an instructional aide, a homeschool communicator at Alpha Heart, and most recently as the Assistant Director of Student Services. The thing that prompted me to want to do this is when we recently experienced victory in the school system by way of our scores, which was great, I did see and was immersed in communities that weren't experiencing victory. And so really wanted to step in and be a part of the team, hopefully so, to really stand in the gap for the students that weren't and really be a fierce advocate for the upliftment and success of all of our students. And so hopefully we'll be, we'll have the opportunity to do that by way of a board seat. So thank you again for having me tonight.
Thank you, Erica Dixon. Next, we'll move to Ken Rice for his opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ken Rice. As he said, I'm new to Columbia. Three years ago, I moved here with my family. We came from South Carolina and then before that, 25 years in Michigan. I'm a proud US Army veteran. I served during the Gulf War as a nuclear, biological, and chemical NCO. I also have been in the restaurant business for 30-plus years, most of that time as an executive and a restaurant owner. I owned up towards to 29 Wendy's and Tim Hortons restaurants in Michigan. I also oversaw as a Vice President of Operations, 45 Burger King restaurants. And now I am the Chief Operating Officer for a little sandwich shop that's grown bigger called Pickleman's here in town that started in 2005 by a friend of mine named Doug Stritzel. We're right now on our 33rd restaurant, growing to about 40 by this, the end of this year in seven states. So we're hoping to go a nationwide chain. I'm also, I was also very active on a group called Spalding for Children, which is a nonprofit which helps the most at-risk kids that the typical minority kids, kids with physical or mental disabilities that are in the foster care system find forever homes. We used to host these events where we'd be, get the kids and the parents together. And over a five-year period, we were blessed that 11 children ended up getting adopted. And then lastly, I'm very, I'm very active in my church. I serve as a deacon. I serve as a Sunday School Director and I serve as the Finance Committee Chair. And I'm here because I believe that my skills and experience will work towards helping the school board make better decisions when it comes to transparency, common sense governance, and support for CPS teachers.
Ken Rice, thank you. Suzette Waters, welcome and your opening remarks, please.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight, Legal Women Voters and the library and all the entities that helped support this forum. This is one of my favorite, favorite events because there are so many people that are interested in what's going on in Columbia. And this is, this is a great event. I am in my third year on the board, in my second year as the Board President. I previously attended Columbia Public Schools as a student. I went to Shepherd, Jeff Jr., and Rockbridge. And then my children went through Grant, West, and Hickman. So I've had some exposure to buildings as a student and as a parent. And then three years ago, when I filed to run for school board, I made an effort to visit as many buildings as possible. And I've, I've been in almost every single one of our buildings, more than 30, and interacted with teachers there, with administrators, and with students. Since being elected, I have visited over 100 classrooms and participated in building events and school events. I've brought boiled eggs and talked about the effects of soda on tooth enamel for Steam Day. I've played the piano at fancy lunch. I've done reading. I've done scavenger hunts, you name it. I love immersing myself in the environment of Columbia Public Schools because I believe you can't govern something that you don't understand. And so it has been really important for me to be present in those, in those education environments. I've been a persistent presence in the community for 40 years I've lived here. I served on the Boys and Girls Club Board when my kids were small. I've been part of the, all my, all the school PTAs. I've gone to lots of events. My husband and I have been married 25 years and we plan to make, this is, this is our home. This is our place. And the reason I want to continue to serve on the board is because I believe public education is the most important part of our critical infrastructure as a society. It must succeed. And when we, when our schools succeed, our community succeeds.
Just like you knew what the question was from the League of Women Voters. So we're going to start with you, Suzette Waters. And this is the question from the league. How have you engaged different stakeholders such as teachers, principals, administrators? But then we broaden it out. PTAs and community groups during your campaign to gather info on what's important to them for the future of this district?
Well, I actually did not know that was the question, but I kind of personally answered it. I haven't, I haven't done anything additional during my campaign that I haven't already been doing for the last three years. Board members are assigned to different buildings every year on a rotation. And I have made it a priority to go to those buildings as often as possible to attend sometimes their faculty meetings, their PTA meetings, go to their community events, their family events, and interact with families there. For the first year I was on the board, I had monthly open office hours that were public and I put, I advertised those. And I did that for a full year to try to be available to the public. I continue to seek feedback from teachers by meeting with different teacher groups and being available in whatever way possible.
And again, just a reminder, 60 seconds is what the league is timing on these answers to these questions. Ken Rice, your answer to how have you engaged different stakeholders like teachers, principals, administrators, PTAs, community groups during your campaign to gather info on what's important to them for the future of the Columbia Public School District?
Well, the first thing I realized is that as an executive, I know that I don't know all the answers. So what I did immediately was create an advisory board. I currently have an advisory board of 18 former and current teachers that are in the CPS system, some being part of the MST, some being part of the NEA. Many of them are retired. I also have a coach, a high school coach. I have a principal. I have a SRO, among many others, as I've gotten to know people throughout the town. I've sat in, in at least one PTA meeting. I've met with two principals so far. It's a short time to get together with people right now. But in the short period of time, I've gotten a lot of information and going, if I get elected, I will continue to have that advisory board and fill it out to use that as a sounding board for any decisions I make going forward.
Thank you, Erica Dixon. Same question. Would you like for me to repeat it?
No, I think I'm good.
I thought you might be.
I think I'm good. Although I want to definitely honor engaging in a political space is, is very unique. But like Suzette, this has been a continuation of work that I was previously doing, especially having worked in the system in many different capacities and most recently in an administrative capacity where I was able to work closely with a lot of teachers and administrators at a building level. Since transitioning out of the district, I also established what we called an educational doula pilot. So just helping folks navigate the educational system. And through that have been able to work with different student groups, specifically in two different high schools right now, as well as establish a parent group within Battle. And so really, like I said, that being a continuation of work and expanding of the work that I was already doing in those various roles.
Just like to say for those of you who are just up in the front here, this is standing room only. May have to find a bigger room next year or something like this or next time. And that's good. I'm glad to see such an engaged community with this. Well, this is one of my favorite parts of this particular forum and that is for the last few years, the league has worked with the school district to see if there were students that would like to come to this event and ask questions. And we have three, two from Hickman High School and one from Rockbridge. And so they will come up at this time and address the three candidates with their questions. First up would be Grace Harris of Hickman.
Like you said, my name is Grace Harris and I'm from Hickman High School. I'm currently in the AP US History and AP Language and Composition Block class at Hickman, where we learn about the history of a wide range of cultures that make up the United States. For example, we recently studied the Harlem Renaissance through the poetry of Langston Hughes and Claude McKay. Our teachers think it's important to teach us about groups of people whose voices may not always be heard. This has allowed my classmates and me to see other perspectives in our country and community. Given the uncertainty surrounding new executive orders on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, DEI, how will you support teachers in their instructional decisions in the classroom?
Start with Erica Dixon.
All right. I love it. So I feel like this is a very important thing for us to stand behind. I'm a strong advocate of this work. I think, as you stated, it not only benefits students of marginalized communities, but it benefits all of our students and everybody in our community and in the world, right? To have knowledge of various perspectives. And so I really hope that we are able to stand in the face of the current criticisms of the work and even attacks of the work because it is important for us to have that knowledge. I think that we do have a duty and a responsibility, no matter what we stand in the face of, to make sure that all of our students are safe and supported and see success. And I think DEI is a very important piece of that work that we, you know, we have to support.
So I take it from a little bit different perspective. I believe that teachers should have educational freedom to teach what they need to in the classroom as long as it follows the law. If the law becomes problematic, we need to look and see if that makes sense. But teachers need to have academic freedom to teach how they'd like to be able to teach. One of the things, I have a teacher that is part of my advisory group from Hickman. And one of the things that she loves about the current principal is she has the ability to teach with a little bit of freedom in her classroom. And I would urge that to continue.
Suzette Waters.
Yeah. So the learning standards are set by the state, but the curriculum is built by educators and that's the way it should be. At this time, there's a lot of uncertainty about what laws may or may not become reality. And as a board and a district and a community, we are, we're keeping an eye on that. But right now it's business as usual and we do prioritize having teachers be able to teach in the way that they feel is most appropriate to them. As long as they are teaching the learning standards, that's what we do. Both of my kids actually took that same AP block. And I can say they developed a greater appreciation for the wider world that we live in. And that is kind of the point of education is broadening your horizons and understanding that although we live in a diverse community, there is still so much more out there. And to, to have the opportunity to learn about those things as a student is amazing.
Thank you.
About appreciation for Grace Harrison, her question, that was a good one. Carolyn Bloom, you're to the front next. Here is a student at Rockbridge High School. And we'll start this question once she reads it and presents it with Ken Rice answering first.
Hi, once again, my name is Kara Lindblom. I'm a senior at Rockbridge High School, but my question regards all students. According to the CPS website, four of every 10 students qualify for free and reduced lunch. More than one in 10 qualify for special education services. Nearly one in 10 are English learners. Nearly half are students of color. And we have a wide range of academic achievement. The CPS mission is to provide an excellent education for all students. With demographics as diverse as the ones I just shared, what would you change to order, in order to better achieve an excellent education for all students?
Thank you for that question. That's something near and dear to me. My son was on IEPs. He was with autism all throughout his life. So he was one of those type of students that falls into that gap. Many of the students you described are, you know, the APR scores overall look great, but to that particular group, they're very discernantly the same as they've been for decades. We need to fix that. And one of the things that I believe that we could do is create parent advisory boards that are in each and every school that include parents, that include teachers, that include staff, that include students at the middle school and high school level, and include people in the community that pay taxes. Each school will be able to have an advisory board that gives information upwards to the district as to the needs. And hopefully we can meet it because each individual school is a, is different. And that's part of the problem. We can't look at it from the top down. We need to go from bottom up.
Suzette Waters.
That's an important question. Right now as a district, we are focusing on individual student growth. The board is asking for data broken down by those subgroups that you mentioned. And we're also looking at individual student growth because that is the measure of success for, you know, if you're a parent, you don't care what the aggregate scores are. You care about how your own specific child is doing. And so we're looking at how each student is growing and making sure they're making a year's worth of growth in a year's time. And if they're behind, they need to make more than a year's growth in a year's time. So we're tracking that with intentionality. And I also do want to say, all those subgroups are, we are proud to take every single one of them. And that is what we do as a public education system. If we dilute the funding that comes to public education, who is going to be looking out for those kids? Because private schools don't take them. Parochial schools don't have to take them. They don't have to provide those services. Public education is the system that gets this done.
So we just recently welcomed the new leader of the district. And one of the things that I would like to see is that we reflect on the results of our audit for special services that we have in audit of our equity department and that we're able to use the data to really hold our new leader accountable to implementing things that would actually move our students forward. And so really honoring what we've seen from our previous data, really having transparent and raw conversation about what we're seeing, right? And not just moving past it, moving on, seeing those students as sometimes what I say is collateral damage. But what do we need to do to impact those students and really looking to our new leader to be able to do that based on the data, not based on feeling or emotion, but based on the data and really taking innovative approaches to meet the unique needs of our students because their needs are unique. And so yes, really looking to our new leader to see what, what their plans are for that.
Thank you.
Here, just like, I'd just like to say, I'm threatened for my job in the future, but I'm afraid that your passion would be wasted in doing this. You need to be a candidate in the future. Be nice. Impressive. And we've got one more. This will be Issu Molel from Hickman High School. And she will read her question. And Suzette Waters, you'll have the first go at this. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Issu Molel. I am a junior at Hickman High School. And my question is, many of my classmates, sorry, many of my classmates are immigrants with varying legal status. Seeing how ICE is increasingly affecting people across the country, how will you support my classmates' rights with ICE, if ICE knocks on the schoolhouse doors?
So hopefully that will not happen. There are, we are very aware of the concern that that brings, not just to our immigrant students, but to their families and to the, the rest of the community that cares about that population. We are required as a district to provide an education for any student living within our boundaries, no matter their immigration status, their citizenship, citizenship status, their ability, it doesn't matter. We provide an education for them and they belong here. So we will continue to provide that education and we will, we will keep our children safe.
I would agree with Suzette, with what Suzette says by saying yes and making sure that we're staying abreast of the realities of that happening, the potential of that happening, and making sure that we're consulting with, you know, our legal counsel to make sure that we are staying in line with the, the different policies that come down, but also prioritizing the protection of our students to the greatest extent possible. Because I, and again, an agreement with what Suzette said, we have the responsibility to make sure that you all are safe and that you all are receiving the education that you deserve.
So I agree with both the, my two other candidates. One thing I would say that I would try to do is to try to figure out how we can get those people to fit the legal definition so they can be here and not have to worry about ICE coming after them. I would try to figure out ways to make sure that we can make them legal so they can be here and be productive, especially students that are trying hard, which I believe almost probably, every immigrant that I've met are one of the hardest workers that I can ever see. So I think we just need to try to make sure that we can do everything we can to get them legally right.
Thank you, Issu. One element I'd like to add to this is to have the students, after they hear answers, grade the candidates in the future. Just a suggestion, I think that would be kind of fun because you all are graded regularly. You should have a chance to say, that was a good answer, that was not a good answer. All right, we have questions from the audience and the first one to answer this is going to be, we're going to start with Ken Rice on this one. And it's, two things are happening to us simultaneously. This is from the audience. Resources and support are being withdrawn while our state legislature is reaching into our communities to impose values, quotation marks around values, and decisions upon us. How can we cope?
Well, resources, I, I think it's so, it's happening a lot on federal and state level right now. It's happening so fast that I think we just have to be very nimble and understand what's going on. At this point, I can't say that I know for sure. I don't think anyone knows for sure. We need to make sure that we understand the law. We need to make sure that we follow the law. And then we need to try to say, okay, where does it make sense and where, where does the school board specifically able to involve themselves in trying to make things better? And what was the second part?
It's just, it's really not two parts. It's just two things are happening. Resources and support are withdrawn.
And, and, well, you said the values are being done. You know, I think, you know, it sounds like, I think any administration tends to impose values. I think values need to come from parents, not from state or federal law.
Suzette Waters, two things happening simultaneously. Resources and support are being withdrawn while our state legislature is reaching into our communities to impose values and decisions upon us. The questioner wants to know, how can we cope?
Like I said before, learning standards are determined by the Department of Education, but the curriculum is determined by educators. So having, I don't think curriculum or standards should be set by legislators. That becomes a little bit of a political moving target, a little bit of a turns education and the words we use in education into lightning rods for conversations that are not relevant. As far as resources and support, that is a big concern. When the state is talking about getting rid of the income tax, limiting the increase in assessed value, all of those things transfer to how we get our revenue. And when there's local changes in revenue structure because of senior property tax freezes and any other number of things, the revenue that we depend on for fixed costs and operating costs, which is largely staff, there's some question marks there. And so those changes that the legislature is proposing are very concerning. But right now, we're going to stay the course and we, that's why I believe so much in advocacy at the local and state level. Thank you.
Erica Dixon, same question to you.
Yeah, I think to speak to that advocacy, so picking up where Suzette left off, but advocacy at a local and state level for our public schools. And so that we are intentional about our messaging in support of public schools. If you support public schools, to make sure that we maintain our resources that we have and that they're not reallocated to spaces that are not governed in the same way that students may not have access to in an equitable way. And so I think that's important. I also think that it is important for us to collectively organize, even though we may not all agree. We're not always going to always agree, but organize in a way that we can stand against anything that is imposed on us that is not good for our students.
Thank you. We're going to start with Suzette Waters on this one. And again, it's a question from the crowd. And again, as I said, folks, we have more than we're going to get to because the questions for the candidates end at 6:35. What is, and I'm trying to take these in order that they were handed in. What is your definition of parent and community involvement?
Asking a lot of questions and doing a lot of listening. So that looks like not just PTAs because different buildings have, have different, different supports in those spaces, but making information available to the public in multiple formats and seeking feedback. Just spitting out information is not necessarily helpful. People need to be able to respond. And then we need to demonstrate that we've listened to that. So I would say being in as many spaces as possible and requesting feedback in as many formats as possible.
Erica Dixon, same question. It's pretty short. I'll say it again. What is your definition of parent and community involvement?
Yeah. So I, I think it's important too that our schools are welcoming spaces. I think diverse representation is important on our board and off of the board so that people are able to use their social capital to engage the parts of the community that they are a part of that may not be communities that other members of the school board or other staff members are. And bringing that together in, in ways that would meet the needs of the parent in the community. So it doesn't look like engaging them in one particular space, but maybe meeting them where they are, creating spaces that are welcoming and not overwhelming. Sometimes engaging in those spaces can seem overwhelming and, you know, there's a lack of understanding of what's going on. And so really meeting people where they are to have them engage in our educational spaces more than we currently are.
I remember a forum long, long ago that said, maybe you'd take school board on the, on the road.
Yeah, for a long time.
Ken Rice, the same question to you. What is your definition of parent and community involvement?
And I mentioned it before, parental advisory committees. It's very successful in the Atlanta, Georgia school district, which is one of the largest school districts in the nation. What it is, is instead of looking at a PTA, you have parents, you have teachers, you have students at the middle school and high school level, you have staff, you have administrators, and you have also taxpayers that are paying taxes on this committee in each of the schools that are represented. So we'd have that. Then out of those groups, you take one person out of each of those groups in the feeder schools and you have a division that reports to the district. And then you take one of those people from each of those and those people have a supervisory, a superintendent advisory committee. That way you actually have the people that are in those schools and have the most information about what's going on in each of those schools, advising instead of having some people at a district level making decisions for schools that they don't have much information about.
All right. I think everybody's answered that question. Erica Dixon, you'll be first on this one. This is what the questioner says. Since private schools are not required to provide services to children with disabilities, do you support vouchers being used for private schools? If so, how do you justify them being allowed to discriminate against children with disabilities?
I don't support that. And I, I couldn't justify that. And so that's why I made the comment earlier that I think it is important for me, I'll speak in the eye, to stand in support of our public school spaces so that all of our children are able to have access to the services that they need to be successful. And, you know, there is the potential of them not having access in those spaces. So that is not something that I stand in support of.
Ken Rice, you want me to repeat that?
Yeah.
Since private schools are not required to provide services to children with disabilities, do you support vouchers being used for private schools? If so, how do you justify them being allowed to discriminate against children with disabilities?
So with the voucher program, I was asked in the past forum that we just had, I had said no, and people said, well, you supported vouchers. I support vouchers, but I think there needs to be some guidelines around those vouchers. And one of the things I would say is that we need to make sure that things like making sure that kids that are in, you know, special ed or something like that are available for that, or you can't qualify for the voucher. So I think vouchers can be helpful, but there needs to be structure around those voucher programs to be successful.
Suzette Waters, would you like me to repeat this?
No, I got it. I'm opposed to vouchers. I think it dilutes the funding that should come from the state to traditional local public schools. If we can't afford to fully fund the foundation formula for public education in our state, we sure do not need to be making a $50 million direct appropriation for vouchers for private schools.
I think I think we have time for one more question. And this one goes to Ken Rice first. And it's kind of an interesting follow up to the two questions ago. This is written from one of the audience members. As a CPS student, gosh, I don't know whether that can narrow it down or not, huh? As a CPS student, I often find my voice is left out of important discussions. How will you guarantee that students will have the opportunity to share our opinion about the schools since we know them better than anyone?
Well, I think I answered that question just before. At the middle school and high school level, students should be on that parental advisory committee that I said that each school should have, and they should have a voice just equal to everybody else.
Well, we are really being short and concise now. I like this. We squeeze in as many as we can.
So the board in the past couple of years has attempted to include more student voices. We have a student voice section in our board meeting, which has been a really interesting way to learn about the different things that students can participate in and hear in their own words what they enjoy about their school experience. I've learned a lot about the student experience from that. And we've also asked that whenever we send out surveys to gain feedback, such as for a boundary change, or most recently about the superintendent search, those surveys are also going to students. And we can parse out the feedback that comes from students so that we are making sure, like for, for example, the most recent one was the superintendent search, we parsed out the feedback we got from students about what their, what qualities they were looking for in a superintendent to make sure that we at least asked a question that addressed what students wanted to see in their superintendent.
Erica Dixon, same question. How will you guarantee that students will have the opportunity to share their opinion about the schools since they know them pretty well?
Yes, I think that's an important point. And I think that, yes, we are the adults and we are responsible for their care and guidance. I do think it is important when possible to make decisions with our students, not to them or for them, but with them. I know that we do have some great efforts already in existence as far as what it looks like to engage students in the decision making. I would also like to see that expanded to our students that are struggling and really having conversation and getting input from them to see what they feel will make a difference. I think that looks like us being committed to spending time in our buildings and in those spaces with them as much as possible, and bringing their voices to the forefront as well. And so I would look like to see our current efforts be expanded to meet more of a diverse population of our students so that we can make decisions with you all whenever possible.
I am at the mercy of the League of Women Voters, and it is time for us to move on, I'm afraid, or else we'll get behind. I would like to say to those of you that sent those questions in, I spent a good portion of this afternoon working on my own questions, and I didn't get to do any of those. So that's too bad. And I thought they were darn good. Suzette Waters, your closing one minute statement.
Thank you for having us again. I need to say that this had this work of supporting public education has been the central focus of my life for the last three years. And I've been proud to do it. I've been honored to do it. And it is the work that I am passionate about for a district that I love. This community means the world to me. Public education means the world to me, and I would love to continue to serve in this role to support all of our students in achieving what they are meant to achieve.
Ken Rice, your closing statement, please.
I want to thank everyone again, just like my other candidates that for having us today. I think that I can bring a different perspective that may be not having the board right now, some different thought processes that can help. One other thing, you know, there's a lot of talk about public funding for private schools. One thing that I find a little hypocritical is currently, right now, we spend one to 1.5 million dollars to send 20 kids to a private school every year. So I think, you know, at times, we need to think about what we're saying and make sure that we're consistent with the values that we have. Thank you.
Erica Dixon, your closing statement, please.
Yeah, so obviously, I'm here because I hope to obtain a seat. And if I obtain a seat, I am one member of a team. And so my desire to do this is because of what I perceive to be a gap in representation of a certain population of our students. And so having been immersed in those communities for a while now, I hope to bring that knowledge, my social capital from those communities into the space, coupled with the expertise, if you want to call it that, of being engaged in the system as an employee, and also navigating this from a parental perspective, and the unique challenges that come along with that. So again, hopefully, we'll attain a seat, bring that to the board, engaging in a political space is different, but it's necessary in order to be able to sit in the seat and hopefully get to work for all of our students and see much more success in seeing them move forward and becoming successful members of hopefully our community. Hopefully they'll stick around. So.
These candidates are for the school board. You elect two out of this three. Erica Dixon, Ken Rice, Suzette Waters. We thank you for being here. Students from the school, thank you for being here and doing such a good job. And audience questions, we appreciate that. We're going to pause for two minutes. When we come back, we'll have the two candidates next who are running against each other for the fourth ward city council position. Back in two minutes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Oh, thank you. Thank you for having me.
We want to welcome back our radio audience on KFRU and also on KOPN. As those of you who are listening online on Zoom and also on the radio stations, you know that there's a lot of commotion in the room as people leave after the school board members. And then we invite people to take their seats for the city council, fourth ward candidate forum. I'll continue to talk. I used to be a teacher, and I know how people don't listen. Columbia has seven members of the city council. Six are representatives of wards and one is the mayor. Each council member serves a three year stagger term. Each year, two ward seats are up for election. And every third year, the mayor is up for election, which is the case this year. In 2025, the wards up for election are Ward Three and Four. Jackie Sample is the only candidate running in Ward Three. This forum is for contested races. I think is Jackie Sample here. I'm sorry, I didn't see. Yep, she's right back there. So if you want to talk to her about the city council, she will be the next Ward Three council person. And then up front, we have the two who are running for the fourth ward. The, are you timing me in my introduction? This is a tough, tough, tough job for Ron Graves and Nick Foster, the candidates. And they're going to have opening and closing statements, just like we saw during the school board portion of our forum tonight. So two minutes to introduce yourselves and say whatever else you would like. Then when we get to the questions, you'll have a minute to answer. And then when we have our closing comments, that'll be a minute each. Ron Graves, you may make your opening statement.
Yes, my name is Ron Graves. I'm a, the, the fourth, I'm running for fourth ward city council. And I'm a, was born and raised in Columbia with the public school candidates here earlier. I'm a, went to Russell Boulevard and Hickman High West Junior and Hickman High School, went to the university. My parents met at the university here. And so I, and my mom actually grew up here also. I really have focused my, my candidacy on, on public safety, on infrastructure projects, and on the, excuse me, and on the affordable housing in Columbia. I really would appreciate your support in, in the election on April 8.
Nick Foster, you've got up to two minutes to make your opening statement, please.
Well, first, I want to thank the league for having this. This is sort of a, it's the pen ultimate one for, for me and for most of us. But the league does such important work. I'm a huge fan of everything that you do, and I'm grateful for that. I also want to welcome everyone to the fourth ward, because the library is in the fourth ward. And I, in fact, picked up a book when I walked in that I had reserved. And it's so nice to be able to be within walking distance of the library for me. I am the current representative for the fourth ward on the Columbia City Council, and I'm running for reelection. One of the reasons that I'm running is that I really believe that we've been very effective over the past three years. We've gotten a lot of things done. But there's still a lot to do. And I will tell you that when I was filling out the questionnaire for the league in anticipation of their putting out their voter guide, I spent, I wrote more than I was supposed to. But it turned out to be a really good exercise before I cut it down to the amount that they wanted, because it gave me a chance to really think through a lot of things. So when it comes to things like housing and infrastructure, and all of the things that we talk about, public safety, I've come to the conclusion that perhaps the largest single challenge we have as a community is our growth and managing that growth. Our city is growing at an enormous rate. Even in the 15 years that I've lived here, we've seen a lot of change. So looking forward, we need to do the things that that need to happen to, that need to happen in order to manage what we're doing. I'm grateful to live in this town and grateful to serve and looking forward, hopefully to serving for another three years on, on the city council.
Thank you both. Ron Graves, this question is going to go to you first. It's one of the questions that was submitted by the League of Women Voters. The city has many boards, such as the building codes and police review, that can provide important information for city council members. What is your experience and knowledge about these boards? And are the boards being utilized effectively?
You know, I sat on the, the CBDG board previously, and also was one of the original members of the, the historical preservation board in Columbia. It's very important that, in my opinion, that the city council listen to these boards and really take into consideration what they are saying. We had a couple of instances in our, when I was on CBDG, that our recommendation wasn't taken. They actually funded a project and, and after that project was funded, that we did not recommend, they ended up having some issues with the, with the organization, and they had to, had to, had to stop funding that project that they did. They're the ones that, that hear the original issues. They, they're the ones that, that the organizations come and speak to. So.
Just a reminder, those of you who want to submit a question from the audience here at the library, if you write the question down, just hold it up, and league members will come and pick it up. You won't have to get up and come to the front. And if you're listening to us on Zoom, you can use the chat feature to submit a question. Nick Foster, the question that Ron just answered, the city has many boards, such as building codes and police review that can provide important information for city council members. What is your experience and knowledge about these boards? Are the boards being used, utilized effectively?
Well, there are over 50 boards and commissions, and that's one of the things that's challenging about managing all that they bring to us. But I will tell you that for me, it's a very critical part of being able to make the decisions that we do make. I take very seriously what boards and commissions recommend to us, the research that they do and the work that they do ahead of time. We had a planning and zoning issue that that came to us from planning and zoning. And I read through the minutes. As I was reading through the minutes, one of the members of the commission said, I don't know whether the members of the council actually read the minutes, but I'm going to put this in there just in case. I read it. And I pay attention to all of those boards. One of the, one of the biggest challenges that we face, honestly, is being able to fully staff, as it were, all of our boards and commissions. Last night, we made appointments to the boards and commissions. And it was really frankly, sort of disappointing that it was so easy to do because we didn't have very many, we didn't have anyone to choose from because everyone who was, who had applied, had, there was a place for them to serve. And so this is one of the things that I strongly encourage people to do, to look at those boards and commissions, find the places that match your interests and apply.
We'll go to the next question, also from the League of Women Voters. And Nick Foster, you're first on this one. What are the three most important things that you would want to do for Ward Four?
Well, the thing that comes to mind immediately is that we really need to deal with infrastructure issues, particularly related to, related to electric transmission. And this is one of those situations where we've had this issue sitting around for a good long while. One of the things I'm proud of about the past three years is that the council has been very intentional about moving some things along that have been sitting there for a while. The introduction of roll cards is a really good example of that. You know, that's, that was a difficult decision in some ways to make, but we made it and we moved on. We really need to do something with the electric transmission lines to be sure that we've got what we need in order to meet the needs of the people and that when they flip the switch, it's there. For the fourth ward in particular, I think there are other infrastructure, other infrastructure issues at work, including our roadways. But one thing that really comes to top of mind is results from a conversation I had just the other day with someone who makes a very good living, but they can't find the housing that they want in the fourth ward or elsewhere in the city. Housing is a major issue, and we need to address that for everyone, including folks in the fourth.
Ron Graves, a question to you. What are the three most important things you would want to do for Ward Four?
You know, I really think that we need to look at the, the issue of public safety in the fourth ward. We really recently had a, a fire that was right outside of the city, but right outside of the fourth ward also. It, because it wasn't, it wasn't a, it was in the county, the Boone County Fire Department was supposed to respond to that. They could not. There was nobody at their, at their firehouse right there on the corner of Butler School Road and, and Scott Boulevard. But the city, city fire department responded, did a great job. But we really need to also look at the possibility of, of housing some, some police officers as a substation at each of our fire stations, if we can do that. Also, I agree with, wholeheartedly agree with Nick. We need to really look at the electric transmission lines. That's a pretty much a fourth ward and fifth ward project that that needs to be examined.
Ron Graves, this next question is from the League of Women Voters, and you go first on this one. How will you communicate with your constituents?
Well, obviously, the, the standard communication that everybody does now, email, phone, I'd like to do, if I were elected, I would, I would probably have at least one, I'm going to call it a coffee talk from Saturday Night Live. But, but something like that each month or opposite times that of the city council meetings to review with constituents, kind of their views on what happened. I know that doesn't get to, I mean, kind of gets to fewer voters, but I think that moving that around to different areas of the, of the ward and not having it in one central location, because this ward is very large, and being able to kind of move it around to different locations within the ward would help.
And Nick Foster, how will you communicate with your constituents?
One of the things I pride myself on is responding immediately when I, when my constituents are in touch with me by email or by phone. I dealt with three things that came to me just today that were disparate in their needs. And it's, I take great pleasure in being able to put together my constituents with folks who can help them at the city. And, and often I'd take care of those things myself. But I'm the only council member that I know of that actually sends out a newsletter. Now, I, one of the things that I want to do in a second term is step up my work with that kind of thing in particular, and do that. I do have occasional coffee times to meet with people. I'm a tea drinker, so you have to put up with that. And, and there's never been a more challenging time for communication. But I'm really going to take a lot of my cues from what the city is doing. And I could talk about a lot about what is happening in that regard. If you were at the community summit on Saturday, that's a brand new thing that the city is doing. The community connectors and so many other things that are happening there that I want to invest myself in.
You don't sound British. Let's, Nick Foster, you're first on this one. What is your opinion on the development of cottage homes? Do you think small cottage homes is a good idea for our community?
Yeah, absolutely. And we've had these kind of things come to us. When we, when we talk and we, and we've approved them, and there are some other things that are in the pipeline that I'm excited about. In my conversation with the person I spoke with the other day, they live in an apartment, and this was something I brought up to them, that these are the kind of things that we want to see developed. Cottage homes are, are happening in R1 settings and R2 as well, but they are small, on smaller lots. And what we've had to do is approve that kind of usage for a lot instead of requiring the kind of larger lives that are normally within the code. That's an innovation that I think is indicative of a number of things that we need to look at over the upcoming years. One of the things that we did over the past three years was to establish the housing department. And so that there's a focus on this issue, which is a crisis for us. We got the housing study done in conjunction with the county, and there are recommendations there for us to take a look at. We need to take a look at codes altogether. So it's a big, it's a big issue. We're facing a crisis in this way, and we need to dedicate a lot of our resources and time to addressing it.
Ron Graves' question is, what is your opinion on the development of cottage homes? And do you think small cottage homes is best for our community?
You know, I, I have a degree in residential design and construction, and some of our projects that we did, were developing affordable housing. And this is in the 80s, so solar energy, affordable housing. And that was a, that was a project that we looked at, trying to build small homes on small lots, infill, infill homes on lots that are within the center city, center. on lots that are within the center city, center of our city. And I think it's a great way to make somebody's first home affordable. My wife's been in the mortgage business in Columbia for over 30 years. She has been, every, every day she has to tell people that the house they want, they they just can't afford. And it's unfortunate, but but without any other, well, without a lot of inventory that we have for houses in the and this sounds crazy because my first house was $62,000. Houses that are under $250,000 in Columbia, they're just not affordable.
We will go to, these are questions, the last one and this one. And from here on, these are questions from the audience and we'll get to as many again as we can. And Ron Graves, you're first on this one. What specific, and they, the person who gave us this question, underline specific. What specific things will you do to increase the police department? Different, again, emphasis on different from what is already being done by the current council and mayor, along with the chief?
Well, increasing the police department is not only hiring new police officers, it's keeping the ones that we have. And we have seen a record number of police officers that have been resigning from from their positions after five to seven years. I think the main reason for that is that their their pension has not been funded. We need to have a plan to fund their retirement. I think that will keep the people here. I think that that will be, it will, it will keep the experienced police officers here rather than leaving and going to other communities.
Nick Foster, the same question. What specific things will you do to increase the police department different from what has already been done?
Well, I guess I'm wondering about what the term increase the police department actually means. I think that the police department has an enormous amount of support on on the council. And in large part, that is because of the renewed leadership we've seen from Chief Slutie. She's doing an outstanding job. And among the things that she's doing is that she is, she's hiring more police officers. We had about 29 vacancies back in September. That's down to 14, I think now. I attended the Police Academy graduation this past Friday. We had 14 to go in. We had 14 to come out. And I think one of the reasons for that is that, and when I say come out, I mean, they they graduated. And that can be taken a lot of ways. And I think one of the reasons is we have a high bar for who we hire. And I support the police department in continuing to do that and and continuing to look at the ways we do that. Right now, they're, they're saying that their purpose is to protect the vulnerable. That is what Chief Slutie says is their North Star. I will support them in every way in doing that exactly.
Ron Graves said a moment ago, something about pension, and this is another question from the audience member, Nick Foster, first on this. To get money needed to better fund the pension, will you cut programs or raise taxes? Which ones be specific?
Well, let me say first that I think that we need to, we need to be, we need to maintain our obligations to those who have served. And at this point, we are doing that. We did have a meeting recently with our actuary and others to talk about what needs to happen with the pension. It would take $150 million to completely fund the pension, 120 million to fund it to 80%. Now, the general fund, which is really the only fund that the council has real power over, is about $100 million. So you can see that it'd be a tremendous reach to get to that place where we fund that. This is really one of those things that takes place within the negotiations with with the union and with the administration. I support us maintaining our obligations and I believe we'll do that. We also have a board that oversees the retirement for our police. And when we provided $500,000 each for the police and the fire department just recently, we said to them, take a look at this and let us know what we need to do next.
Ron Graves, same question. To get money needed to better fund the pension, will you cut programs or in raise taxes? Which ones be specific?
Well, I, I believe that probably a little bit of both will have to happen. I believe that we need to look at the allocations that we have currently in the budget and see where we can, what what we can do to help with the pension amount. We have been on the governor's watch list for the, for governmental pensions for 13 years with the low, low percentage of that we have in our pension, and that needs to change.
Ron Graves, I'm going to do the best I can to read this and bear with me here, but you're first on this. City, City Hall, there's a new state law. I'm interpreting this as I go. And it affects citizens' police review committees. And they are prohibited from discussing police policies. Would you support establishing a new city board to discuss and recommend police department policy?
I think that police department policy should probably be set personally by experts in that field. I don't think that we have a lot of citizens in the community that are experts on community, on on police policy. I would not probably support anything like that.
Nick Foster, same question.
I think this is a difficult question that we're just going to have to find a way to address. When that change was made at the state level last year, we were told by David Tyson Smith that it wasn't intended for us, that it was really aimed at St. Louis. But it did impact us and then we, some of us agonized about exactly how to address that, including members of the CPRB. And a little while ago, when we were asked, do we pay attention to what comes from our boards and commissions? This is one that we've spent a lot of time in building up again so that they would be effective. This new law from the state made that more difficult. There's no question about it. And I think when you talk about policies, policy being, coming from this group in particular, you need to keep in mind that these are recommendations to the chief. The CPRB had no power to impose a policy on the police department or on the city in any way. We need to find a way to get back to that. I have had conversations with folks about whether or not we want to establish a new group. I think we're going to have to do that in accordance with what the law actually is. But it's something that that's very, the people of the city need to know that they have a voice in responding to police concerns.
Nick Foster, first to you, another audience member question. The Opportunity Center is an opportunity to house the population and need your views, please, on this program. And to those who write questions and who are sending the questions in, again, guidelines for this forum, the same question has to be asked identically to both parties. And I have questions that would be more specific to one or the other. And I'm just going to end this question right there. The Opportunity Center is an opportunity to house the populations and need your views on this program?
Well, this is one that's near and dear to me. While I was at Voluntary Action Center as executive director, I worked in this area and worked with many other agencies in the community to address homelessness and housing. The Opportunity Campus is one of those things that we have longed for and needed in our community. It's going to be a great asset for us. I want to caution us though, that it's not going to solve homelessness. It will be a great central place for 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 services to be provided and to coordinate other things that are going on in the city. I think it's really important to note that while the city did provide ARPA funding for this construction, along with the largest amount of funding coming directly from the state, the county, and there's a lot of private money being raised. The city needs to continue to be involved in supporting the work that happens there. And so as Room at the End moves to the Opportunity Campuses, Loves and Fishes moves there and other services like Turning Point, the money that the city provides to those agencies now needs to follow them because our, our, our responsibility to this population, our city will not end when there's a new building.
Ron Graves, same question. The Opportunity Center is an opportunity to house the populations in need. Your views on this program?
Yeah, I, I spoke with the director of the Voluntary Action Center about this project and I think it's a fantastic project. I think they will do a great job in in running this program and doing what they need to to help the homeless in our community. I think the city does have responsibility to help them. I think that by funding, funding certain programs within this, in the, in this program, it will help our community. But it also need, there needs to be some, some goals and goals and objectives that they need to meet for that funding.
Final question, and we'll start with Ron Graves on this. We have, this is from the audience member. We have many, actually a Zoom participant. We have many varied opinions on the safety of Columbia. In your opinion, what is the most concerning safety issue in our city and what solutions would you like to introduce?
So the, the most concerning thing is, in my opinion, is the, the use of firearms in our community by teenage teenagers and young adults. I really believe that a good solution to this program would to be, is to reinstitute the Columbia, the community policing program that was stopped in 2018 because of the low number of police officers that we had. When Chief Shaludi was the deputy chief, she, she actually said that that's the reason why we stopped this program. We would have to have, obviously have more police officers here, but but that would be one of the best solutions we could have. And having them in these groups of of police officers work the same beat and work with the same communities and get to know the people in those hotspot areas. It would be one of the best ways, I think, to to help with violence in our community.
And Nick Foster, we have many varied opinions on the safety of Columbia. In your opinion, what is the most concerning safety issues in a issue in our city and what solutions would you like to introduce?
Well, I agree that gun violence is the, is the most concerning thing to me, especially among young people. Among the things that the city can do is encourage the use of gun storage and the use of gun locks, for instance. I believe that you can pick up a gun lock here at the library. Somebody nodding their head at me? Yeah. So check it out on the way out if you need a, if you need a gun lock. But we also need to be advocates for common sense gun laws. And there are, there are things that we need to do on a state level that will address, address this. And among those are red flag laws and laws that require safe storage of firearms. I think that community policing or beat centered policing is closer than far, is closer than it is far away. And with hiring up a complete police force, we'll have an opportunity to do that and I certainly do support it.
I want to say to those of you who handed up questions for the city council candidates of the fourth ward, if they're appropriate for the mayor candidates who are going to have up in a couple of moments, I'm going to use those also. Some of you did indicate that you'd like those questions to also be asked of the mayor candidates. We've reached the end of our time for questions. Again, I apologize to those whose questions were not answered or addressed. I would also like to say we'll take a minute for closing statements and we'll do it the reverse order as we did at the opening one. So Nick Foster, you're first.
Well, again, thanks to the league. I know that one of your values, one of the things that is important to you is what happens at the grassroots. And when I came into the library not too long ago, there were a couple of folks at a table right next to the door and they were signing people up. They were registering people to vote. I can't tell you how important I think that is and how much I support it and appreciate it. And there is nothing closer to the ground root grassroots than local government. I believe that local government and local elections may be more important than they have been, at least in my lifetime. And I hope that we will all be attentive, pay attention to all of the things that we need in order to educate ourselves, to make good decisions about how we vote and encouraging others to do the same. I've lived here for almost 15 years. My wife is an administrator at Mizzou now. My daughter, who used to go to Grant right across the street, now goes to Jeff Metal. We are deeply rooted here. We love this place and we want what is best. I'm running because I want to serve my community and this community I love. I hope I'll have your support on April 8th or before, when early voting starts on the 25th.
Ron Graves, your closing statement, please.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters also for inviting me to this candidate forum. You know, I think that with my 25 years of nonprofit, community, non-for-profit fundraising and sales experience and also the other experience that I've had in the community, just living here, I would, I would make a great city council member. I've seen four or five parents of kids that I actually coached at Danielbin Little League. Was a volunteer there for, for 35 years, still am a volunteer at Danielbin Little League. But deeply, deeply entrenched in our community and in both family and my, and my not volunteer life. So yes, I want to, want to thank everybody for coming and please vote on April 8th.
We thank you, Ron Graves and Nick Foster, for being here and for running for that position in the fourth ward. And we will take a two-minute break while we ask those candidates to step down and to have the mayor candidates come forward back in two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, appreciate what you've got.
And good evening again to our audience members who are listening on KFRU and KOPN. Also, those of you who are on Zoom, we appreciate your participation tonight. And we're getting ready for our third and final section of our forum. This is the, yeah, thank you, League of Women Voters Forum. Tanya, come on up here. We've got, I see at least right now, three out of the four candidates for mayor of Columbia. And we are going to have our forum move into that portion of our evening and wrap up with this. Again, thanks to the League of Women Voters for always doing such a good job of hosting these forums and also for the library for being our host. And let's talk about candidates. Four candidates running for Columbia mayor, Tanya Heath, Barbara Buffalo, Blair Murphy. And there is a certified write-in candidate and his name is Lucio Batoy. I don't see Mr. Batoy here right now. Maybe he'll come later. We're going to allow two minutes for an opening statement from each candidate. And then we'll have the questions, just like we've done in our other two segments of tonight's forum. Each candidate will have a minute to answer each question. And then after we get to the closing time of 7:50 for this group, we're going to ask for the closing statements and that'll wrap up our forum for tonight. So opening statements are going to be presented in ballot order. Tanya Heath, welcome. You have two minutes to introduce yourself to the crowd.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, so my name is Tanya Heath and I am born and raised in Columbia. I went to Fairview West in Hickman and I graduated from the School of Journalism with an advertising degree. My husband and I have a young adult daughter who also went to all those schools. And the reason that I am running is because I feel like that there is cloud of confusion with communication. When I hear things are not moving in a forward direction and I talk to 360 type of research with people I'm talking to, they all have different answers as to why things aren't moving the way that they should. And I think that my communication background will help because I want things to be clear. And so for instance, on the crime in Columbia, if, if you hear people say, well, crime is down, that's because they're looking at the state patrol numbers. If you talk to some police officers, it's the way that it's reported. And so if it's reported that a person's punched in the face and that they're stabbed in the left arm and they're shot in the right leg, it may only be reported that they were shot in the right leg. And so does that matter? Does that matter if the number's 300 or does the number need to be 900? Because it was three incidences, even though it was the same person. And so there's just various things that as we're trying to clarify what we're doing, how we're doing and how we're moving the city forward, where we're stuck and how we can work together so that we can hear everyone and accomplish the goal of listening and working together to move our city forward. I think we're at a critical time and we need to do that. My focus is on safety, both on supporting the police and on prevention. It's on infrastructure. It's on other things.
Thank you. Barbara Buffalo, your two-minute introduction, please.
Well, good evening and I thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. I think when Nick said it's the pinnacle event, I was like, I have four more forums. What are you talking about, guy? One of the things that I've been most proud of over the last three years is getting things done. You know, previously, for those who didn't know, I worked for the city for 11 years as our city's first sustainability manager. And one of the things, you know, I got to do is to to work in all the different city departments, work within community groups around town to find out where there were opportunities for us to have efficiencies. And one of the things I kept noticing over and over was a process would mess it up or we would have to recreate a process or a program or plan every time we were doing something. So for the last three years, I've been really proud of getting some of those efficiencies done. So we have the same sort of ways that we do our, our communication and outreach around big infrastructure projects, but we can improve. And that's why I want to continue to run. That's why I'm continuing to run for mayor is because while we've been getting things done, like the water treatment plan expansion, moving the needle on automated trash collection. I'm sorry, somebody that is at the podium does not care for them and let it known very throughout my career.
Let's not get personal.
He showed me his picture of his roll cart just before this session. One of the things though is like moving those things forward and how important it is to continue having this experience in the seat of the mayor that has the understanding of the past, what we've been working on, as well as the best practices that other communities are doing and how we can, we can repeat it, we can replicate it, we can blatantly steal it, whatever it is, to put it in place in Columbia. So one of the things that I think of when I think about the future is also that I'm worried. I'm worried about things that are happening across our nation. I'm worried about things happening in DC and Jefferson City and its effects that it's having on Columbia, not just with funding, but also just the narrative that you're seeing out there about going back to the way things were. When I moved here, we were 80,000 in population. We are now closer to 130,000. And with that growth, we need to plan for it. And I will stop because Carol told me to.
All right, thank you. Blair Murphy, your opening statement, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Blair Murphy, also known as Murph. I've lived here for 54 years of my 57 years. I'm the proud father of two daughters, ages 23 and 19. I currently own Johnston Paint and Decorating here in town. I started 37 years ago there and worked my way up from the loading dock to assistant manager to manager. And my wife and I bought it 12 years ago. And my wife and I bought it 12 years ago. We're very proud of that. We're actually celebrating our 100th year in business this year in Columbia, something I'm proud of. But the, why, why am I running? I'm, I'm basing it on infrastructure and affordable housing. But number one is public safety for me. I, I think we need to concentrate on some stuff moving forward. And I want the, uh, young people and families to, to have what I had when I was younger in, in Columbia. And I think Columbia is a great city. I just think that, you know, it just needs a little bit of, uh, attention drawn to public safety and stuff and, and make it better for all of us here. So that, that's, that's the reason I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to our first question. This is one that the League of Women Voters has come up with. And Tanya Heath, you're first on this. You all have, all of you have kind of answered this in your opening statement, but this is one I want to repeat anyway. And I think it's specific. I think the league is wanting some specifics. What are the three most important things you would want to do as the mayor?
I, I would want to focus on safety holistically. So that would be, um, supporting the police, their retirement, the tools, the training and their mental health. But I'd also like to look at preventing crime. And we know that that happens with poverty, lack of resources, lack of a good role model and mental health. And so I'd like to work with the nonprofits and outreach programs and make sure that they are doing their unique and amazing things, but they are also getting some sort of best practices and we can work that out in different ways. Uh, I'd also like to focus on infrastructure and moving the electric and water, uh, bonds forward. And finally, I would like to make sure that we are addressing the acute and chronic homelessness and displacement issue in our city. So that when the opportunity campus is up and running, we have a solid plan for helping people, but also managing what, what that opportunity campus means for our city.
Barbara Buffalo, the question to you, what are the three most important things you would want to do as the mayor?
Yeah, well, I, I think the league also for putting this question into the voters guide. So the first is housing affordability and access to it. We did a study last year with the Boone County that looked at our projected growth and what sort of housing options we need to have. I'm proud that over the last three years, we've approved a lot of new subdivisions that have different looks. So creating the variety of housing options that we have from small lots, uh, to multifamily condos. The variety we need to also have a walkable neighbor, walkable neighborhoods that are transit oriented is going to be key. The second is about infrastructure and public safety. We have been lucky to get a lot of federal funds lately for infrastructure. I'm worried going forward. So prioritizing getting our projects done with our local, uh, sales tax dollars are important. And then for public safety, we've increased the budget for our police. We have 40 new officers that started last year alone. Those investments are going to be key for us being fully staffed. And then communication, this is huge. As we've grown, I'll talk to people all the time when I'm responding to emails and they're like, I didn't know about that program. And I'm like, we need to do better about this. And I'm proud of the work the city manager has started implementing this past year to do that. And I'm talking as fast as I can, Carol. Sorry if you didn't catch up.
Question now goes to Blair Murphy. What are the three most important things you would want to do as the mayor?
First and foremost, again, is public safety. And my, my main goal would be to get us fully staffed and to make sure that we can take care of our city. Second of all, the infrastructure, you know, i- is extremely important. The power line issue, moving power around, dealing with all that stuff. You know, I know it's extremely important, uh, to get all that figured out, where the power lines are going to go, which route they're going to go, all of that. But also, uh, affordable housing is something that's near and dear to my wife and I. Uh, she's currently on the board for Love Columbia and we just actually built a home for a mom and five children in Columbia. So that is something that's near and dear to me also. So, thank you.
All right. Let's move to another question from the league. Barbara Buffalo, you're first on this. If jobs at the university and local federal workers such as VA staff are reduced, as it seems that they're going to be, what will you do to bring employment opportunities to Columbia?
Yeah, well, part of this happens through our Regional Economic Development Incorporated office. This is the city's economic development office that we then partner with load, um, major institutions and partners within, uh, Boone County. And one of the things that we focused on over the last few years is growth in this, creating new job opportunities. And not just in manufacturing, but also in research and medical investments. Um, so I think that's one opportunity, especially with those coming from the university. The other thing that the role to play in this is also to advocate for those positions not being lost. And so as mayor, writing to our Congress, uh, representatives, writing to Jefferson City and to our local officials about the importance of investing here locally and keeping those jobs in Columbia, because it adds such vibrancy to our community.
Blair Murphy, you're next. And the question again, if jobs at the university and local federal workers like VA staff are reduced, as it seems they will be, what will you do to bring employment opportunities to Columbia?
Well, first and foremost, like, uh, Barbara said, I mean, my main goal is to keep everything here, to keep everyone that currently lives in our city employed. And, uh, that, that's first and foremost for me. So that's what I would concentrate on is, is making sure that all of our local people here are taken care of.
Tanya Heath, you want me to repeat that or do you have it?
I have it.
All right.
So yes, I would, I would definitely, uh, talk to, you know, the chamber and talk to businesses who may be interested. Go to business, um, conferences and that type of thing. But the other thing I think we need to look at is that, you know, the small business community is the backbone of America. And so as you talk to people that are in the chamber, or I'm a founding member of the Columbia Black Professional Society, what does it take when you're a small business to become a successful, huge business? And some of it's mentoring, some of it is financial insight. There's all types of things. And so I would be focused in addition to looking outside to bringing in, I'd be focused on what can we do with what we have here that are, that are the gold nuggets that just need to be found and developed with mentorship.
Next question, we'll start with Blair Murphy. This is kind of a, it's a good order for this particular question to have Barbara Buffalo last. Because the question from the league is, how much time or hours per week do you anticipate you will need to work as a mayor?
Great question. I've been told all kinds of numbers, but I'm counting on anywhere from 30 to 40 hours a week, from what I understand. And again, I also own a business here that requires a lot of my time. So, uh, I'm looking forward to trying to balance everything and, and make sure that I can take care of our community also.
Tanya?
So I have a, um, independent wellness business that I can schedule clients at any time. And so I'm willing to put the hours in during the day and the evening to make sure the job is finished. And I know Barbara said that she added up her hours and it was, you know, quite a bit. And so I'm willing to do that and, and, and do as many things as I can to make sure that everyone's voice is heard and the ideas are brought up to city councils. So, thank you.
I made the mistake of trying to add up my hours one time and then estimating on the stipend what I was making per hour. And I never have done that again. Um, so I, I was, I reviewed my, I exported my calendar for the last three years and it averages, it depends on a council meeting day, but between 40 and 50 hours a week. Because on a council meeting day, especially, you know, from starting off on KFRU, uh, first thing in the morning, uh, to continuing on with council, uh, meetings with council members leading into the pre-council and the actual council. And that's not all the work that's done beforehand to read up on the, the items that are there. Also, it's important that we're advocating for the city of Columbia at a state and a regional, national level. Um, so we continue to be this shining star of best practices in city government and local government. And so some of that time, uh, is obviously important for me for advocating for Columbia. But yeah, and then getting out into the community, attending, everyone wants the mayor to be there, whether it's fancy lunch or a graduation. And so being there if I can, and I'm lucky that my husband, uh, my husband, his salary covers our family. So I'm able to do this.
Thank you. This question from one of the audience members, and we'll start with Tanya Heath this time. Given the limited role of the mayor, what is one thing you feel you can actually accomplish in office?
So, yes, I, I think that, I think what my heart is with graduating from the School of Journalism is that even though I have an advertising background, the basis of it is doing the research and doing the research from all the people involved. And so as we look at different challenges, I will be out there making sure that I'm talking to the, the president of the company, as well as the person that is living in affordable housing, to the person who's a new mom, to the person who's a grandpa. I will be talking to a wide variety of people because I think it's important to make sure that everybody has their perspective heard. Because it saves a lot of headache after the fact, if we've already done the research prior to when we create whatever the next step is.
And to Barbara Buffalo, given the limited role of the mayor, what is one thing you feel can actually, actually accomplish in this office?
Well, I think it's something that I've been working on for the last three years and it's about the tone of the office and how council is in the community and at our city council meetings. As the leader of the meeting, you know, I'm making sure that we're having opportunities for people to speak. They were being fair on our council members, giving their opportunity, but also that we're creating more additional, um, opportunities for work sessions. We should not be making decisions at 10 o'clock at night that are like huge decisions. And sometimes they've been made at midnight, but not under my watch. We've, we've ended our meetings more closer to the nine o'clock hour because we're spending the time beforehand in work sessions and off Monday events, learning about more of the details. Because I think that helps us be more informed before we do a vote. So I'd like to continue that practice, uh, of, of that. And I think part of that is my personality of wanting to hear from more.
Blair Murphy, given the limited role of the mayor, what is one thing you feel you can actually accomplish in the office?
Well, first and foremost, I would like to come in open-minded and, and listen and have communication with everyone on the council, which, which will be important to me because I, I'm going to be learning as well during this. So I'm, I'd be excited to come in and listen to what everyone has to say and, uh, work with everyone.
All right. Next question. And Barbara Buffalo, you're first with this. Another audience question. Do you think Planned Parenthood provides a role in Columbia's healthcare community?
Yes. Do you want more?
Do you want more?
Okay. All right. Yeah. So, uh, as a college student, I went to Planned Parenthood for my healthcare. Um, it is a, it is a low cost, low barrier opportunity to get healthcare. Uh, and especially when there's attacks happening on women at the state and the national level. Um, I think it's more important than ever to have these opportunities for community members.
Blair Murphy, same question to you. Do you think Planned Parenthood provides a role in community and Columbia's healthcare community?
Yes, I sure do. You know, I, I think it's very important and it's needed to support family decisions that are, are tough to have.
Tanya?
So I, I think that, you know, there's a wide variety of choices for women. And with Planned Parenthood, they offer a variety of services, including mammograms and pap smears and, and a lot of things. So I just think that, you know, it, it is an option.
Next question, Blair Murphy, you're first on this one. On March 5th, Missourian published an article headline, "Fear of Crime and Homelessness Emerges Key Issues for Local Election." The article included this quote from a member of the Facebook group, The Real Columbia, Missouri. Quote, "What used to be an absolutely beautiful city in Missouri and a pride for Missouri is no longer. It's all horrendous. The crimes, stealing, stores robbed, addicts laying around and homeless everywhere, constant shooting. It's a real shame." The article pointed out that crime rates in Columbia have actually decreased over the past four years. But what is your reaction to the Facebook quote?
Well, obviously with public safety being my number one thing, uh, this is, uh, a great question. But, you know, I, I would say that as long as we have enough staff to take care of all of the things, the, the homelessness part of it, uh, again, I, I'm for helping people that want to help. So that's, I mean, that would be what I'd say, but you know, definitely getting the, the police fully staffed to be able to take care of a few of the issues, but also help the people that want to help.
Tanya Heath, you're next. Shall I read it again? All right. March 5th, the Missourian published an article headline, "Fear of Crime and Homelessness Emerges Key Issues for Local Election." The article included this quote from a member of the Facebook group, The Real Columbia, Missouri. Quote, "What used to be an absolutely beautiful city in Missouri and a pride for Missouri is no longer. It's all horrendous. The crimes, stealing, stores robbed, addicts laying around and homeless everywhere, constant shooting. It's a real shame." The article pointed out that crime rates in Columbia have actually decreased over the past four years. What's your reaction to the Facebook quote?
Okay. So two reactions. First with the, um, decrease in crime. Again, that's like that whole statistic thing. I would like to know exactly how they determined statistically, how crime has decreased. You know, what were the exact metrics for how they, um, wrote it up? So we need to establish what that is first. And then second of all, if everyone's in agreement with how they determine it, then that would be helpful for everyone to know. As far as the homeless and displaced, I've actually talked to several people who are homeless and displaced. And I've talked to business owners who have had warming fires burn their, um, businesses. I've, I've talked to doctors, nurses, I've talked to EMS, and I've talked to pharmaceutical reps to understand the complex of the acute as well as the, um, chronic homelessness. And my six, my seven ideas are that we need to help communicate how they can find an ID so that they can create a work history. We need to update and enforce all laws regarding panhandling. We need to, instead of cash, put up web links or QR codes so people know where to donate. I would meet with mayors from other towns and, uh, make sure that we are collaborating with the best practices of how to help people move from being homeless to being independently employed and successful. I would also work with people as far as how, what are the best practices for helping them detox from their addictions? Whether that's pharmaceutical or route or, um, other detox like heavy, heavy metals, parasites, plastics. We know that a recent, sorry.
Barbara Buffalo, you get the final crack at this. Would you like for me to read this again?
Would you just read the quote?
The quote is, "What used to be an absolutely beautiful city in Missouri and a pride for Missouri is no longer. It's all horrendous. The crimes, stealing, stores robbed, addicts laying around and homeless everywhere, constant shooting. It's a real shame." What's your reaction to that Facebook quote?
That it's a horrendous quote. And I think, I mean, that's the question is what's your reaction to that? My reaction is I disagree. That's not the Columbia that I see every day. You know, I, when I'm, when I am lucky that my husband and I, we live close to downtown, so we often ride our bikes downtown for dinner. Uh, we were just there on Saturday night and just these opportunities to, to, to tear down our city is not helping. And I think we're seeing the same rhetoric happening at a national level. We have invested so much in public safety and we continue to, to bring down the crime numbers, which is why they're down. We are investing in social services because we believe that nobody deserves and should be forced to live on this street and to suffer from any of their ills. We invest in these things because we are a caring community and we will continue to be a caring community. So I reject the quote and I think it's an unfortunate show of what we're seeing right now on social media and fake news sites.
Let us go to another question. Tanya Heath, you're first on this one. I'm playing a little bit of a jerk here, but I'm going to do this anyway. So your emphasis, all of you want to emphasize public safety. And that means you want to reduce all crime. Okay. Does crime include property damage? Is it a crime to run a red light? If so, then why not reduce law breaking by having red light cameras? That's a way that studies are showing that accidents are. And I know you're going to say that the law in Missouri prohibits that. It does not. There are cities that are dealing with this now and reinstituting the possibility of red light cameras. So that's my question.
Okay. The que, the question is.
Why not install red light cameras if you want to reduce, uh, uh, crime and improve public safety?
Okay. So if, if we were to install it, I certainly would want to know the pro and con before. I would like to have a, um, discussion with people of all points of view to find out the pro and the con. And then if we went forward with that, on the one hand, we definitely want people to be safe. There's so many people unfortunately that have life-changing accidents because someone did run a red light. I've seen it several times. Yeah. And that is a tragedy for that family, that person. And, um, and then on the other hand, we, it's a tool. And so any tool needs to be monitored. We need to have spot checks so that people don't abuse the tool. And I just think that we need to go in eyes wide open with the pros and the cons and really study it before we implement it. And then follow through with making sure that it is not abused.
Barbara Buffalo, the same question.
Yeah, I think I'd, I'd actually have to, because I was told, yeah, that the state law, uh, said that it was not allowed. And so some of the recent, uh, tools or resources that we've given to the police department or that we've approved, that they've requested, have been around camera system. And we do want to be mindful for how the implementation and the policy is used for that, to make sure that they're not being abused. Um, for, for me, um, the one and the other thing, when you talk about red lights is also when we're talking about how we build our infrastructure and how we think about vision zero, the physical infrastructure we put into place is also a key in keeping people safe, uh, as we're doing, talking about traffic accidents. Um, so yeah, I'd want to know more about that one, David, because that is different than what I was told.
I have done my homework.
Figured you'd get.
Blair Murphy?
News articles all the time, people.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Uh, I also thought the same thing that we couldn't. But, uh, first and foremost, I would talk to other cities that have it in place and figure out how it's all working for them and the, and the good and the bad and the indifferent. But, you know, I, I would be open to educating myself more on this to see if it, it helps, but I'd start. But I'd start with talking to other cities that currently have it.
And I would say this, the Missouri Supreme Court did say that the law as it was written was illegal. But that did not say that you could not institute red light camera laws or else Missouri State Senator Mike Moon would not have introduced Senate Bill 540 right now in the legislative session, which says prohibit the automated red light enforcement systems. So he wouldn't introduce that if it wasn't possible to have those laws now. Let's go to, uh, who did I leave? Uh, let's see, Barbara Buffalo on this one. Would you support amending zoning laws to allow more mixed residential, commercial zoning areas? The person from the audience said, imagine if no matter which neighborhood you lived in, you could walk two blocks and buy your fruit, veggies, grains, oils, spices, and other things to cook, like in many other countries.
Of course. Yeah. And you know, in our recent housing study, we were doing a housing study at the same time as doing a transit study. And, you know, in both are the recommendations for more transit oriented development. Is where you have more density along areas of which, uh, bus routes can go, or where there's more car traffic. And it creates more walkability for people as well as this opportunity to, to take the bus. And then for us, as we're looking at the diversity of housing options that we need, not everybody wants to ha, have a house where they have to maintain a yard. Some people want different options and we want to create those options. One of the struggles that we have is we can only do what comes to us. And this is always a struggle, right? I need to have developers come to me saying, I want to create this. And so one of the ways we're looking into, uh, implementation of our housing study is how can we put incentives out there? How can we use some of our housing trust that we invested in our budget this year into those incentives to create more mixed use density or an intentional infill into a subdivision design? So that you do have those options for housing.
Thank you. Blair Murphy, the same question. What, what, would you support amending zoning laws to allow more mixed residential, commercial zoning areas?
Absolutely, I would. I, I think it's pretty important for those, uh, that transportation is a problem to be able to have a lot of stuff close. I, I personally like to ride a bike and that'd be kind of neat to be able to ride from your house to a grocery store to whatever, you know, whatever the thing is. But just for the people that, um, struggle with transportation, I think it would be, it would be pretty good.
Tanya Heath, same question. Would you support amending zoning laws to allow more mixed residential, commercial zoning areas?
Yes, I, I think for any new property area, then that way the people moving into it would know that is what it is. As opposed to doing rezoning for established neighborhoods with established, uh, expectations. And I think that, um, it's important that as we, as we are supposed to have, I think, 37,000 homes built by 2050, we have to think about how we're going to use the available land and how we're going to make that holistic with, with people's needs. Whether they are wide enough streets for bike lanes as, you know, opposed to the small streets that have bike lanes that, you know, cars and bikers are trying to use, that's not exactly safe. So I think that as we look at it, we need to have conversations and committees with residents as far as what their concerns are, as well as builders because of their creativity. Thank you.
Next question, and I'm kind of combining two questions here. They both deal with the same subject matter. And Blair Murphy, you're first. On the matter of public transportation, what's possible and how do we get there?
Uh, well, uh, I, I actually rode the city bus a lot when I was a kid. Uh, that was my main transportation with my single mom and myself. So I, you know, but I also think police visibility, police visibility on that is, is very important too with currently what we're dealing with, with our city buses. But I, I would definitely look at ways to make our city bus transportation better.
Tanya Heath, same question. On the matter of public transportation, what is possible and how do we get there?
So I, I think this is again, where we have to have a, a deep dive study as to what's actually going on with our bus system. We used to have to pay to ride the bus. We have stopped having people pay to ride the bus. We have people that are riding the bus as a way to stay cool in the summer and a way to stay warm in the winter. We have people who are riding the bus for the logistics of getting to a job. And we have bus drivers who, we are short-staffed on bus drivers. And we have bus drivers who also are working overtime. And, and there's things that are going on in the bus safety-wise that are concerning to the bus drivers and concerning to any potential person who might want to be a bus driver. And so I think we need to look at what the purpose of our bus routes are. And then how to make the best use of those tax dollars so that we are accomplishing the goal. Thank you.
Barbara Buffalo, on the matter of public transportation, what's possible and how do we get there?
Oh, that's a good question on the possible part, because part of it is going to take a big investment. You know, we've, we've been lucky. Last year we got a $23 million grant to invest in our bus barn. Think of this as like where the Thomas the Tank Engine train, trains go at the end of the night, is where the buses go at the end of the night. We're investing in that space so that we could continue to grow it, but we, that was federal funding that came through to us. And right now I am worried because most of our funding from, uh, for transit is like an 80/20 match with the federal government. And I don't know if Department of Transportation is going to continue to invest. So that's why I put a little bit of like the bad area with the possibility. But we did just conduct a transit study and it showed us what is possible if we continue to invest in this. We have increased wages for our bus transit drivers. We know we need to think about additional flexibility for them, for doing their jobs, so we can recruit more people to this. I think they said if we're four short, once we have four more drivers, we can uncombine the routes that we have. So those shorter leadways would be possible. But I truly think where we can go is a partnership with the University of Missouri. And I have been in talks with the administration there about an investment, because we know our students need to get around town too.
Tanya Heath, this is a first one for you, and this is a question that was posed to the ward for candidates, but I, I think the questioner wanted it to the mayor candidates also. And the law that kind of restricted citizens' police review from doing certain things. So the question was, would you support establishing a new city board to discuss and recommend police department policy?
A new board? So we would have two boards or do you think just a new one?
I can't read the mind of the person who asked that, but I would say let's go with two boards. You'd keep the review board since it, state law right now has said specific what it can do and seems to restrict what it used to do in Columbia. So how about a new board to deal with, uh, police department policy?
So I, I think that, I think that it helps overall. It's difficult. It's difficult when we have people who are not in any sort of job. Like, like you want doctors to review other doctors. You want teachers to review other teachers. So that is so important. But on the other side, you need input from the end users. I, uh, taught at Mizzou for 12 years and every semester we got a review of how we did. And so that was very helpful. And then the students also got a review of how they did. And so it was a two-way street. And I think that when, when, but, but the people that were judging me as far as whether I was hired back every year or not, they were the, um, chair and the dean. And so I think, I think there's room for both, but I think ultimately as far as anyone's job, I think it should be judged based on, you know, the, the profession, that input's important.
Barbara Buffalo, would you support establishing a new city board to discuss and recommend polit, uh, police department policy?
Well, my hope is, is that we don't have to. We do have, uh, our representative, David Tyson Smith, has introduced, uh, legislation at the state level to remove that piece, um, from the kind of ominous bill that it was included in. I don't know how, how likely it is to move forward, but he seemed optimistic on it. So I'd like to encourage all of us to make that known. We want, we want to support this bill that's happening in Jefferson City, because that would allow us to re, uh, re, put our citizens' police review board, the, the duties back in it. But one of the things that I am hopeful, um, optimistic about is that Police Chief Schludie has talked about, um, creating a, uh, an advisory group, an advisory committee that could then do some of these activities, because it's directed by her. And I look at it as a way of that we could then encourage what sort of representation that we want to see on that. And that will allow us, I think, to do a little bit of both at the same time.
Blair Murphy, same question to you. Would you support establishing a new city board to discuss and recommend police department policy?
Well, I'm not sure exactly on that, but again, I would go with the people that know the business, uh, which like I said, I would have to trust, uh, Chief Schludie, uh, to, to do all the right things and, and make sure. So I, I would, I would say that we would, we would need to just probably stick with what we've got and hopefully that will, that will get it done.
One more question. I am up against a timeframe and, uh, the question start, it goes to Barbara Buffalo first, and it's from a audience participant. What would you like your legacy to be as mayor?
Oh, shorter council meetings. I think I've done it. No, I, I would like it to, to be that the, the city has continued to be a place where people choose to be. And I think we see that with the growth of our community, um, that we're a great place to live. I don't, I don't point to things like, oh, that park or that part of the farmer's market. Part of it is, is just that we are, we are continuing to live up to our, our, our history. And one of the things that I, I am most proud of is some of the really non-sexy things, like the more work sessions and efficient meetings and, and having routine process reviews. I know it's not sexy, but it's what makes it possible for us to get the things done. So, yeah.
All right. Blair Murphy, what would you want your legacy to be as mayor?
I, I would want to just have Columbia, like I said before, the way I enjoyed it as a kid. And just to make sure that everything's being attended to, there's conversations being had about all kinds of things. And so, but, but, uh, get Columbia the way it was many years ago when I was a kid.
Tanya Heath, same question to you. What would you want your legacy to be as mayor?
So let me pose a question to the audience. And you can raise your hand or you cannot raise your hand. But have any of you been given a citation where you have five days to clean out a homeless encampment? And if you don't clean it out within five days, you will be fined $15,000. And so I know it's difficult to hear that, but I have talked to two people that they were faced with that. They had to go and rent the equipment to take the needles and take the trash out of their property. They had to hire the people. They had all this expense that they had to incur in addition to doing the work. And there's no guarantee that after a month, that the people who are homeless and displaced won't come back. And so while we don't have a system where we have the steps for success that, that will help people who are displaced get the help in the direction that they need, my legacy will be that I will be talking to all people and I will be bringing the easy things and the hard things that we must face as a collective community so that we can brainstorm on how to handle all of it honestly and with courage.
So we have reached the point where we will hear our closing statements. I'll remind people that the library closes at eight and if you are not out of here by then, we're all hermetically sealed in here until nine tomorrow morning. Actually, after the closing statements, I have just a short thing to read. And then up until eight o'clock or until the library flicks the lights, you may be able to corner these people and talk to them about other matters that you have on your mind. Sorry, candidates, but I'm giving that offer. Blair Murphy, we appreciate you being here. Your closing statement, please.
Uh, I just want to thank you guys. Uh, these forums are really good for me, considering I'm not a politician and I'm just a citizen trying to learn. So I really appreciate being here. What a, uh, great event, very well attended, which is awesome. And, uh, I've, I've, I appreciate all of it. So thank you.
Barbara Buffalo, we're coming back this direction on these closing statements. So now your closing statement.
Yeah. Well, I want to say thank you to the league and to the library for hosting and David Lyle for coming out of retirement for these forums. Everyone's just here for your voice. You know, when I look back on the last three years, I'm proud of the work that we've done. You know, being a former civil servant, being a city, uh, employee, it was kind of weird to go from behind, you know, behind the audience, behind the curtain, to being sitting at the dais. So there was definitely some like learning curves to, to step into the space. But I'm proud of the work that we've done and the items, the items I've been able to move forward. I'm also happy with my campaign. This is a grassroots campaign put together by people in Columbia, investing in what it is that they believe we are and where, where we're going to be and where we need to continue going. I'm proud to always show up, whether or not it's to every forum or whether or not it's to the doors or every invite that I've received. So I hope to have your support as we go for April 8th or the two weeks before for no excuse voting. So thank you.
Tanya Heath, your closing statement, please.
So I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. It's very important that we have new voters of all ages and encourage many generations to be as dedicated as you all are and have set the bar so high. So I want to thank you for that. And I would say that I really look forward to being the mayor of Columbia so that we can creatively, strategically, and holistically look at each issue and address the things that we need to make improvements on. And then make sure that we are benchmarking what successes we are having. Be honest with where we are failing, where we are struggling, because there's so many smart and capable people in our community. And when we go out and we talk to each one of them, a lot of them can give us very helpful solutions that will help us move forward. And so I'd like to collaborate with all of Columbia and bring us to that higher level of transparency and courage. Thank you.
Well, thanks to the mayor candidates. I just want to make a personal note. I know for a fact 10 years ago tonight, I was at the Carl Skala Ward talking about road cards.
I know. A hundred percent why we did that vote was just so it never came up at forums again.
Well, I'm glad it doesn't come up again, but I can remember 10 years ago to this night doing that. So the candidate forum has concluded with that. The League of Women Voters, thanks all the candidates and you all for being here in person and, and sitting through this and providing questions for those of listening on Zoom. And of course, we do want to thank the, the people who have made it possible on KFRU and KLPN for broadcasting tonight's forum, Lauren Williams and her tech crew here at the library. So the league wants to remind you again that check their website for the voter guide for the April 8th election for candidates. As you have heard already a couple of times tonight, early voting begins on March 25th and goes through April 7th. That's at the Boone County Clerk's Office. I think there are other opportunities to do early voting also. Missouri requires that you have an unexpired Missouri driver's license or non-driver's license, unexpired US passport or other federal ID to vote during early voting. If you do not have an acceptable photo ID, you can still vote on election day with a blue provisional ballot. Thank you again, everyone, for attending and have a good evening.